Also, please put our Vice Mayor, Mark Cruz, in your purse this evening. His mother passed away Sunday. Okay, now we're moving on to a presentation, and that would be the oath of office. Oops, I forgot something. The agenda approvals, additions, and or deletions. Oh, I forgot everything. Let's have the video statement, please, Donna.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Universal Cable Systems. Meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, February 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, February 11th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website, and DVD copies available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Donna. Council, is there any agenda approval, additions, and/or deletions? We're good to go, then we'll go to the presentations. The oath of office ceremony to our new police officer, Lauren Kroger.
Right in the middle. Face your audience. I'm just gonna say a few words. So, going through the academy and becoming a police officer is no small feat. Unless you've done it, just like any other career field, it is, it's one of the most amazing challenges mentally and physically. They put you through the wringer, and in the end, about 25 percent of the people wash out, and then you gotta go find a job. And so Lauren applied with us, and we put her through the wringer again. And then, I got word that she was the top of her class, and as soon as that happened, I was like, "Oh, my goodness, let's get her in here as quickly as possible." And she's become just an amazing addition to our family, and so, and then she's brought some of her family with her today. But a few highlights, she's, she lived in Wyoming, Utah, and Michigan before she moved here with her family to Folsom. And then she has an associate degree from American River College. Got that right? And so, she likes being outdoors, and so, I think she's gonna be an amazing fit for us, and she has her dad, Ken, with her, and he's gonna be pinning on his badge. And I also want to acknowledge, and I'm gonna butcher this, Randy, I am so sorry. Um, Al Berry?
Yuliver.
Yuliver Berry, thank you so much. I've met him a couple of times, neighbors of mom and dad, and I ran across, I've met him a couple of times, and so I want to acknowledge, he was the Union City Police Chief, and then he also was interim at Folsom, and now he's at Winters, is that right?
Williams.
Williams, okay, I knew it started with W. And so, always happy and friendly when I met him at Folsom, and then now, and so he wanted to come and congratulate you two. So, it's a big honor to have these folks here to welcome you into our family. And so what we're gonna do is now you're gonna get sworn in, and then your dad gets a pin on your badge officially.
I, Lauren Kroger.
You, Sam Misswe.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Will I take this obligation freely?
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
Endure in such time?
Endure in such time.
As I am employee for the City of Galt.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
At the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
I just told him if he draws blood, he gets extra points.
Congratulations, Officer Kroger. We're happy to have you aboard.
And Madam Mayor, we also went to Delta College graduation where Anthony Castaneda graduated with our patches today, and so he will be sworn in tomorrow morning here at the city, and then he'll be, we'll get him sworn in officially here at the next council meeting.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have the storm updates and emergency alert system from Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. We're having some brief technical difficulties. I've got a froze-up screen, and I can't click OK. So bear with us just a moment. Our IT professional's gonna give me a hand here, see if we can get this over to the public and the audience. Yeah, I restarted once, 'cause I had the same problem. Maybe it did work. And let's see if we can get into presenter view here. Need to get a full screen slide. You had it for a second there, and then when I clicked Play Presentations, jamming up. So, it's showing well, but it's not, it's running all the time. My apologies.
Okay, we're gonna go on to public comment, and then come back to the report, if that's okay with you, Mr. Winkler.
Okay, would you please read the public comments? Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during such consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter's jurisdiction of the city council, and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk. And first public comment is Barbara Payne. Topic for discussion, Tiny Smiles.
Hello, Barbara, how are you?
Hello. It's nice to see you all this evening. Though I did come to say how disappointed I was in the action that this council took when Pastor Rick came before you and asked you to waive the fees for his event. The reason, or one of the reasons that was given was because they couldn't see the benefit that it would do to the community. I felt like I had to address that. For one thing, I know the city council did a economic development survey some years ago. One of the things it said was bring more festivals and events to the community. So we know there is a benefit to this event. We know that people will come from out of town, they will stay in the hotels, they will buy gasoline, they will eat food. Actually, the hotels even collect a tax whenever people come and stay here. Maybe that's something the council should consider when they're looking at the benefit to the community, the taxes they get when people come here. The other thing is, as a member of the Historical Society, I'm happy to say that the city has donated money to McFarland Ranch, and we are so happy that people come to McFarland Ranch from all over the area. Money that's sent there does not just benefit the people in Galt, and that's a really good thing. And I think what Pastor Rick is trying to do is also benefit to only the people here with the revenue it brings, but to everyone. And I have to say, as a mother, a grandmother, and a great-grandmother, I really appreciate the research that he's trying to get to help infant heart disease. The other thing, I don't think you can really appreciate all that this man on his own donates to the community. For one, he is a chaplain for our Galt Police Department, and that reminds me, a few years ago, Lynn Hutchinson came and brought this gigantic check that showed how much CAP volunteers contribute to the community, and she put a dollar value to it. I don't know how she came up with it, but it was thousands of dollars that volunteers do give back to the community. I think what Pastor Rick does with his time available night or day as a chaplain is something that should be considered when you're looking at what are the benefits that he brings to this community. The other thing that he's involved in is something he organized in the community called Love Galt, and he gets people to come and work. They clean up, fix up, all different areas of Galt. The volunteer work that they do is amazing. I have a small check that I want to contribute to the amount that the city was gonna make him pay, where they would not waive all the fees, only half. I'm disappointed that we couldn't waive all the fees, and I'm disappointed that I can't afford to make all the difference. But it is so important for me to let him know, and the council know, how much we appreciate the benefit that he does bring to this community, both in dollars and cents, and the love he gives to the community. So I have this check. Should I give it to you, Emily, or, or I think Pastor Rick's here, I'd be happy to give it to him. Who wants my bunny?
If you want it to be contributing their share of the fee, then maybe it would be better to go to him and then come through that direction.
Pastor Rick, would you mind? With the consent of the council, I would like to give him this check. Thank you.
Next, I have Terri Carson. Topic for discussion, fee waivers.
Hi, I'm here representing the chamber and the businesses in Galt for the same reason Barbara was up here, so you kinda know, but on behalf of the chamber and the businesses, this event brings exposure downtown, it brings to the small people, it, again, with the restaurants and hotels and Walmart and gas, all of that, it brings it to it too, and, um, I hate public speaking. And I know you probably don't see a lot of sales tax revenue from it right away, but like she said, the hotels are taxed that extra $10 or whatever it is to people that have to stay, and we have a lot of small businesses downtown that it goes by, you know, that wouldn't have that exposure to other people coming into our town. You know, we have more than just Walmart and Rayleigh's out there. And I, too, was disappointed that their fees didn't get waived because of the benefits and all that they do for the community and stuff also. So on behalf of the chamber, I have a check, and I also have a check for my business, Carson's Coatings, and one from me personally to give to Rick in lieu of the fees you guys didn't waive.
Rick, can Rick come and get it? Next, I have Gail Weber. Topic for discussion, nonprofit fee waivers.
My name's Gail Weber, and I'm here with Galt Shop Local and the Galt Sunrise Rotary. Both groups are sad to hear about the Tiny Smiles Marathon being perceived as not a benefit to the city. We understand the monies and the budget, but what we don't understand is the perception that nonprofits and service organizations are not benefiting the city when they ask for fee waivers for their events. Without these volunteers and service organizations, Galt would not be Galt. There are so many good people working quietly in the background that provide many services that the city can't or won't provide. One example is Tiny Smiles donated an expensive defibrillator to the city. The Galt Sunrise Rotary has an annual Christmas dinner which brings in over 1,000 people and brings the community together. These organizations are not asking for handouts, they are asking for help in providing these services. The expenses of port these organizations should be viewed as an investment in our community. The monies are returned many times over to the city in form of volunteer hours and services. The Tiny Smiles Marathon does bring in some revenue. Both hotels are booked for the race. These people will buy gas, food, groceries, and shop at local merchants. There's even a past participant who moved to Galt after liking what he saw while at the event. This marathon could eventually put Galt on the map. It's apparently a council mandate, according to some city staff. Nurturing this event could pay off big in the future. Look at the bike race in Sacramento. You cannot quantify these events to organizations only with money. You can certainly quantify them by the goodwill, the sense of community they provide, and those volunteers working for you. So yes, we understand the money, and we understand the budget, but instead of telling an organization that you don't benefit the city because your event doesn't fill their coffers, tell them thank you for what you do. We appreciate your service. We may not have the funds to give you what you're asking for, but it's not because we don't value you. Let's work together to see what we can do. To show our support, Galt Shop Locals agreed to donate $100 to Tiny Smiles, and I also have a $100 check here from Amy Sandu from Best Western. So Pastor Rick.
Okay, Al Baldwin. Topic for discussion, meeting, council.
No, Rick, I don't have a check for you. Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, a city of character and very positive area. It's really growing good, slow, concerned. It's been wonderful, but I try to make it to as many meetings as I can, but I'm having a challenge with the daily meetings at 1:00, 'cause yeah, I'm kinda old, but I'm still working a little bit part-time, and it's a challenge for me to get here, but I have seen it on TV. I've had comments from other people saying, "Oh, they don't want us there, and they don't wanna hear what we have to say." And I said, "No, it's not necessarily that, but I will approach them and see what I can come up with. Maybe they'll consider it maybe an earlier meeting, like 5:30 or something," which I've had a recommendation from someone from the city even, "instead of going at 7:00, have it a little earlier at night." But what I'd like to know is, if someone has a concern about something that may be on the agenda, can they, could they, would they, might, either email it to the city clerk or maybe even one of the council persons, and have it read on TV, 'cause you're on TV at this, with their concerns. There's no other way some of the people can do this, and this would be one way that at least you'd be able to hear in their words what they would like to express about an item that may be on the agenda that they can't get to, and if you wait two weeks longer and bring it up, it's already done, voted on, passed, or discussed by you guys. And one of the meetings I looked, I watched, and the comment was made, "Well, you know, there's not that many people out here." And they said, "Yeah, well, there's not that many people that come at night either." Well, every other week, I guess, you're on this, or you're testing it out, I'm not sure, but we're not a large community yet. We're getting there, we're growing very positively, but it would be nice if we could still keep that good old-town feeling and have a time for people to come and voice their opinions. Maybe the kids could come, 'cause they're going to school in the daytime, things like that. It would be nice that we're still a community thinking of the people, for the people, and hopefully we voted you in by the people to be that way. So, it's just a thought I'd like you to consider, and maybe either go back to it, or if you're concerned about being here too late, start it at 5:30 or 6:00 maybe, and maybe that would help. I'm not too sure why you did this, but you did it. And it doesn't mean you can't review it and go over it and have discussions about it in your own time, and come up with something that might be more viable for people that can't make it to the meetings at 1:00, 1:30, because of either work, school, other things. So just a thought I'd like to bring up to you, and you're doing a fine job. This is excellent. The city's still running. It's becoming more profitable with Sean, but it's working out really good, and appreciate you listening to me, and hopefully you come up with some suggestions that will work. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, now we're gonna go back to, you got your little computer working? Okay, now we're going back up to storm updates and emergency alert system, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I apologize for the technical difficulties. We'll keep our fingers crossed here. We had quite a series of storms, an atmospheric river event that came targeted right through the central valley during the month of January, and then repeated storms thereafter. And I'll just give you just a quick pictorial overview of some of the impacts to our community that may be for the public's benefit, as well as show you some pictures of things that you may not have seen. And I apologize for not presenting from the podium, but we don't have our remote flicker tonight, and that would make it problematic. What I wanted to real quickly do is just kinda talk about Galt's topography and where we're situated. We actually are very fortunate in that the yellow areas, as you can see, follow waterways, and those are actually a depiction of where the 100-year floodplains that FEMA has mapped for our community are. And as you can see, to the north, and east, and west, and south of us, along Dry Creek, I apologize for all the blue, those were a background layer on the county's website that I couldn't get rid of, those are actually elevations along Dry Creek that they're calling out, 100-year flood elevations, but the yellow along the bottom of Dry Creek would continue up to the east side of town, and that is where our 100-year floodplains are. The good news, as you look to the right-hand photo, is, we zoom in a little bit, is the, you can see that there's not much yellow in the incorporated city limits, and the yellow that you do see is actually contained within the channels of Dry Creek, Dead Man's Gulch, and a number of other tributaries. Up in the upper left-hand corner, you can see the wastewater treatment plant acreage, which is part of the city limits, and we do have a floodplain running through that, but that is actually our Skunk Creek reservoir, where the city actually owns and operates a certified dam within the state of California, and we use that as a reservoir for quality control, water quality, as well as storage of our effluent for ag use and reuse. So we want that to be a floodplain, 'cause that's where we're gonna hold the water. So, as we came through the heavy storms in late January, this is a picture looking east from Highway 99, that's the Dry Creek Golf Course, and water is right up to the pedestrian path to the golf course. Of course, the golf course itself was completely inundated on both sides of Highway 99 and was inaccessible, and behind you in this photo would be where their cart path is, and it was under several feet of water at this point in time. That overflowed on the north side of Dry Creek out into their parking lot, and on the south end of Crystal Way, and left quite a mess when the waters did finally recede. This is a picture looking south, just south of the bridge on Lower Sacramento Road, south end of South Lincoln, and we did have the road closed for a period of two days until the overflow of Dry Creek receded from the overflow channel. This is a bike and ped path on the Creekside subdivision, south of Cost Road, where it dead ends at the railroad track, and quite a bit of whitewater flowing through there as Dry Creek filled its banks, but as you can begin to see going out of the picture, both pictures to the right, the subdivision homes themselves are probably eight feet above this elevation, so we're in no danger of flooding. We did have some damage to the fencing down there where the water eroded it, and one of the good neighbors there pulled it up out of harm's way for us to recover. This is actually on Cobble Hill Way, which is adjacent to Dead Man's Gulch, east of 99, and this is probably one of the lowest areas in town. The floodplain actually extends out into Cobble Hill Way and around the corner to the south, but the road actually acts as a reservoir and would generally contain the 100-year flood without getting in to the homes you see pictured, or just out of the picture to the south or left of the picture. So this is actually an area that is expected to flood during extreme high-weather events, and we saw that this past January. Trees were down in and near, and were in the news. We had several dozen trees go down in the Galt area. Over half of them were private trees, but we did have in excess of 10 trees in our parks and public street rights away that were part of our maintained landscaping that also had to be addressed. And then my hat's off to Armando Solis. He's ever trying to get water features brought to town. The last one was an indoor water feature over at Chabola, but this is Emerald Vista Park, and at one point we had a kayak sighting. We weren't able to get a picture of that, but we were told that somebody was kayaking around, and I said, "Well, I guess that's okay, as long as they're being safe." But running along the north side of the park is the lower branch of Dead Man's Gulch, and it does overflow into the park, which acts as a reservoir basin. We opened up for the first time in several years our sandbag station, and in a period of two weeks, gave out over 6,000 sandbags to residents, which they would have to come and fill them, but we had to reorder sandbags twice, and in fact, our stores actually ran out, as did the counties, toward the end of the storm event where the consumables was overflowing, and we went through 120 cubic yards of sand. That's 10 dump trucks full of sand. So that was a very popular sight. We had the trees, with the trees come down power lines, and our local utility providers were working hard in the region to keep the lights on, and we only had two outages as a result that were widespread, and those were, as far as Galt was concerned, were repaired within several hours, thanks to the hard work of our private utilities. And with this, I'm gonna turn it over to Lieutenant Kalinowski, who's got a few slides to talk about PD responses and some emergency service capabilities we have to reach the public.
Absolutely, thank you. So this slide here shows you a breakdown of the calls for service that we received during the storm events. Many of those were highlighted by Mr. Winkler with the trees, branches down. No roadways specifically in the city that were blocked as a result of that, requiring staff time to monitor. However, the area was impacted. Roadways flooded, sometimes that's during heavy downpours, and by the time we arrive on scene, they've resolved their own issue by catching that drainage up, but nevertheless, we get many of those calls, and it goes all the way down to one of our favorites at the police department, our roof leaks. So that's what we, some of those things that we sustained. So you see that there? The next thing, if we, thank you, sir, is council saw last year the Everbridge MOU that you approved our participation in. That Everbridge program is also- That Everbridge program is also known as Reverse 91, which provides this community through our dispatch center the ability to alert landlines in the city of Galt, residential and commercial, of emergency situations that folks need to be aware of. Now, this partnership was initially funded with a grant several years ago, and was continued to be paid for by that grant. And then you saw it last year because funding ran out. And so then, for our participation, we needed to pony up some money and participate in the MOU. So, it's sacramento ready dot org is the website, and it's hosted by three counties, as it says there, Sacramento, Jolo, and Placer County. And that program, again, as I indicated, allows for landline communication notifications. Some folks, when they were doing the residential burns over by the golf course, may have received some of those, because we were alerting the public to potential either traffic issues with the smoke, or just general, preventing calls for just general curiosity or wondering what was happening. So, we're letting people to know ahead of time. One component to this program is the ability for folks to opt in something other than their home landline. Many people don't even have home landlines now, and they just live on a cellular phone. So, you can go to sacramento ready dot org and sign up and register your preferred method of contact, which for many people is a cellphone, or you can use email, or TTDY, or if you have a landline other than AT&amp;T and Verizon, sometimes these look like internet-based landlines and other things, and want to include those in the notification system, you can sign yourself up for those emergency notifications. There's another piece of this program, and I'm just gonna ram one out, so whenever you want to flip, it's fine. Another piece of this program, which is unique, and it's something that we look at doing that we haven't done to date, but as we get more people to opt in, is if people want to opt in to quote-unquote "community events" in Galt, it would give us the opportunity to alert the community like we do on Facebook, or Twitter, or other social media platforms, a way for us to notify folks of a community event that maybe we were just talking about. So, that would give folks the opportunity to hear it in a different format or forum that they may not originally or ordinarily get. And so, but you need to opt into that community event component on the website, it's self-explanatory. If you don't do that, and you opt not to be a part of that, you'll still just receive any emergency notifications that the police department needs to put out. And last line. Now, the question was asked, "Well, so what have we done to date?" We have just over 400 opt-ins currently inside the city limits of Galt in addition to our landline program, and we look to increase that. All communities struggle with the outreach in an effort to get people engaged or involved. And throughout the state, whatever Bridges told us is, they put placards on buses, they do handouts like we do, we put it on social media, and nobody cares until something's happening. So, like, when the storms are coming, they're gonna be interested. If the fire's coming over the ridge, and you're wondering what's happening, that's when they get their opt-ins. So, we would like people to be proactive and get their information out there early, but they always see a spike during the times of local emergencies. So, in the next round of city newsletter ideas, we will suggest Everbridge as one of the items. We posted it on our Facebook. TJ, who does a lot of our community meetings, has the flyers from the county. We distributed those same flyers to school district facilities, city hall, the police department, and other places that have high community impact or contact. And Sacramento County continually does PIO activity efforts through the Sacramento media outlets to continue to engage and to try to get support for the program. So, that's a summary of where we're at with Everbridge, where it's come from, and where we're headed, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions, Council?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Donna, would you please read the information and consent calendar?
Minutes of the regular meeting of January 17, 2017. Receive and file warrants for a period ending February 1, 2017, and Second Amendment to the agreement with Next Level Information Technology Incorporated to provide information technology technician services.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Sure, move.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second. Call for the vote, please, Donna. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Cast 4-0. Thank you.
Okay, now we're at Schedule Matters. The subject is the zoning ordinance amendment to modify the formula for dedication of land, population per type of dwelling unit. That's for you, Mr. Arias.
Good evening. Chris Arias, Community Development Director. The item you have before you today is an amendment to the Development Code regarding the dedication of land. Next slide, please. The city has a park requirement of five acres of parkland per 1,000 residences. So, new residential development is required to provide land for parks or pay in an LUFI. The park requirement is based on an average 3.24 persons per household and the number of lots in the subdivision. The 3.24 persons per household is a flat rate and doesn't take into account any different types of housing units. So, using the Fairway Oaks project as an example, because it's 100 units, so it made it kind of easy, we would take those 100 units, multiply by the 3.24 persons per household, which would give us our estimate of population for that subdivision. We then divide by 1,000, multiply by 5, and then that gives us our park acreage requirement for that subdivision. The city of Galt approved the Dry Creek Oaks project in January 2016, so a little bit over a year ago. And if you recall, that project contained 200 single-family units set aside for senior use. It also had high density for senior use and an assisted living facility for seniors. So, it was determined that the 3.24 persons per household did not accurately reflect the number of persons estimated for that subdivision. So, the city council at that time directed staff to propose an amendment to the Development Code so that the number of persons per household would take into account different types of housing units. It should be noted that the city of Galt updated our Development Code in 2015. And prior to that update, we, the city, did have a chart that used varying household types and then the number of persons based on it. So, you can see that actually on the screen on the left-hand side. That is the previous code, the types of dwellings, and then the average persons per dwelling unit. That wasn't carried forward when we updated the code and just went with the flat rate of 3.24 persons per household. But in the previous code, those average persons per dwelling unit were based on 1980 census data, so we couldn't just carry that forward. So, staff researched for more current data, and we actually found the American Community Survey, which we believe was completed in 2010, was provided to us by SECOG and produced by the Census Bureau. And that actually provided, for most of these categories, pretty specific and local data. So, those are the numbers you see in the proposed code update. Next slide, please. This item was presented to the Planning Commission in December of 2016, and then was continued to the January 2017 meeting. The Planning Commission asked staff to provide an analysis of the proposed code and what that difference could be for parkland dedication. So, we have a couple of different figures there. On the left-hand side, in the current housing units, the city has 745 units in the tentative map process. So, those are the units that are estimated to provide parkland dedication. And then, I also use then the Eastview project as an example of parkland dedication, and that's the number of units associated with it. So, on the left-hand side, you see the parkland dedication that would be required for both of those scenarios. Then in the proposed code, for the existing units, we calculated or factored in the Dry Creek Oaks senior development. And so, you can then see the acreage of parkland required based on the new current housing, or the new proposed code. And then, in the Eastview estimate, what we did is, it was hard to figure exactly how it would develop, because it's pretty much designed to be, at least for the 1494 units, all single-family. So, just using that as an estimate, we figured that the development would go primarily 80% single-family dwellings, because that's the way the city has developed. If you looked at the city's current housing stock, it's 80% single-family dwellings. So, using that as a baseline, 80% single-family dwelling, 10% senior, and 10% duplex, we estimated the acreage that you see there. And that represents roughly a 10% difference from then the current code. So, based on that difference, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the code amendment, but only if the changes in the recommendation didn't result in a loss of dedicated parkland. So, we created a chart presumably to offset the potential loss, and based on the 10% loss of the Eastview example, we increased the average number of persons per household for each dwelling unit type across the board to compensate for the potential loss. So, staff, we take the Planning Commission recommendation very seriously, and we appreciate the effort that they provided in this discussion on this item. However, after further review, when preparing the city council report, we determined that we were gonna recommend the initial staff recommendation, and that was based on two items. The first one being that since the staff recommendation is based on current and local data, we believe that it better represents an estimate of a population in the subdivision, which would ultimately provide a fair, a more fair park requirement for development, and we think it's more accurate. And then number two, state law requires that we base land dedication or LUFIs on census data. So, the staff recommendation then hits that requirement as well. So, the city council could choose this, or the city council could choose to keep the current 3.24 persons per household. But staff believes that that figure is excessive for other types of dwelling units. Next slide. And that concludes staff presentation. We ask that the city council introduce an ordinance to the Galt Municipal Code to mending the formula for dedication of land, and we'll be available to answer any questions you might have.
Council? Chris, who pays to maintain parks?
That would be the city. The Parks and Rec Department is responsible for doing maintenance of all park facilities.
And you and I were talking, how much does it cost to maintain?
Well, I don't know exact figures, but when we did a, you know, just recently, the Parks Staff and I did a Parks Planning Training Session with the Parks Commission and also with the Planning Commission. So, we went over the relationship between the general plan and then the Parks Master Plan, but kind of went into more detail on the Parks Master Plan. And what we showed in the Parks Master Plan is that for essentially every dollar you put into a new park upgrade or improvement, you need to factor in a dollar on an annual basis for maintaining that facility. So, I don't know, I don't have the exact figures for maintenance, but the general rule of thumb is, for each dollar you put into a park facility, you should plan on a dollar on an annual basis to maintain that facility.
And one of the, so there's, this is park dedication land. And then there's the fee to build, to actually build the parks, the parks that's for house. When was the last time we upgraded our parks, our park fees?
That's true. There are two basically park fees. One is the park dedication or Quimby fee, which are the same thing. And then we do have a park impact fee, and that's about $8,000 per single-family dwelling unit.
Based on square footage, is that what it's?
No, it's a flat rate for all single-family residential development. I believe that was updated at the time of the Parks Master Plan, so 2010. So, that, yeah, I believe 2010, maybe 2011.
In reading the comments that were made by the Planning Commission, it appeared to be that there was just some concern about that we, I mean, there was the concern about loss of parkland by changing the fee schedule, by changing the dedication schedule. But there was also just seemed to be a concern that we have all these new housing projects in the horizon, and that maybe we aren't collecting adequate fees to be able to build, to be able to meet the master plan, to be able to meet the park master plan. And so, I was just kind of wondering if it's been six, seven years, if it isn't time that we look at that? Because that seemed to be the overwhelming issue that I saw, even though it went on about the park fees. I mean, the loss of the two acres didn't seem to be, I mean, seemed to be an issue, but it didn't seem to be as big an issue as the concern that maybe we weren't really adequately collecting fees for our parks. But I don't know what surrounding fees are, and I don't know if that's something as a council that we're interested in doing, whether we go back and we look at, are we, you know, and since it's been seven years or so, are we collecting, I mean, is our fees right? Are our fees right? I guess that's kind of when I was reading the report. I mean, I think that, I understand that we need to do it based on the census. It makes really good sense, but I was just a little concerned that that there seemed to be a concern from the Planning Commission that we weren't collecting, that we, maybe it was the other fees.
Just a couple of comments. I understand the staff report. I do disagree that, with the notion that there's a loss of parkland, because the loss of parkland represents an overcharging of what the fee would otherwise be, because it's based on persons per household. If you're assuming 3.24 persons per house in every type of housing unit, you've overcollected. So, it's not a loss of parkland, it's, I guess, establishing a rate that fairly represents the different housing types in the community based on the average persons per household. So, I don't see the rationale in that discussion. And I think what's more important is what the law says. The law says that it has to be based on a reputable representation of the persons per household in various types of housing units. So, I think that's what was in effect at one time, and I remember when we approved the Development Code, I raised this issue because we went to the flat rate, knowing that it was inappropriate. Not to say illegal, but very inappropriate. And then the point that I think Councilman Hewer brings up is very good. I think maybe we need to do, to look at the capital improvements that are outlined within the Park Master Plan. One, to ensure that, you know, because I know that over time, we look at an adjustment based on the CIP. Well, CIP is good for a period of time, but I think you need to recheck what are the actual costs for these construction improvements that are outlined. So, I think that that's a very valid point. I don't know whether we're collecting, overcollecting, undercollecting, or where we're at. But I know that that fee has been that number for a number of years. I, I, I use in summary, I agree with staff's recommendation making the changes I set forth in the report.
I agree with you, Councilor Campion, having gone through with you before with the very valid issue of the senior homes that were coming in and how we were charging their son and coin to go along with staff also. But looking into these collective to make sure that we are able to maintain the parks when we get some.
And thank you for catching that.
A year ago. Yeah. It's not even just the maintaining of them, it's the actually building the facilities that, I guess, you know, I mean, there were things in the, in the, and when you look at the Parks and Rec Master Plan, there are things in there that I'm not sure we would ever be able to build unless we really looked at, are we collecting enough to build it? I mean, there was supposed to be a second pool, and all of these things are in the master plan.
Okay, building and maintaining, I can't correct.
Well, and I think that's a whole nother subject that I know that staff's gonna bring to us, is the lighting landscape maintenance districts, because those are what fund the maintenance, and we have problems in a number of those districts, and I know that they've been working on that as well. So, that'll be a whole nother facet of the Parks operation.
I'd make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Public hearing?
Second. Oh. Hold on, have to open for a public hearing. I'm gonna open a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to add anything?
Yeah, it's hot.
Okay, closing the public hearing. Could you please read the, Donna?
Could you please read the, Donna? Please. The never-ending temperature in the room.
So we're just accepting, so we just need a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'm going to read it. Introduce an ordinance amending Chapter eighteen point six four, point zero eight zero B, point zero four of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the formula for dedication of land.
Oh, here.
That wasn't it.
So moved.
So you're taking the staff recommendation for us?
Okay. Do I have a second?
One clarification, it also includes waiving the full reading of the ordinance and continuing to the next regular meeting.
Did you?
Yes, I did include that.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a mo, a first, a motion from Campion and a second from Hewer. Call for the vote, please, Donna.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lampton?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Passes four to zero. Okay, moving on to the Treasurers Report for the period ending December two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. Before you this evening is the Treasurers Report that covers the quarter ending December of two thousand and sixteen. So that covers the months of October, November, December. I'm going to take you back in time a little bit to November. If you remember, there was a huge speculation that the Federal Reserve was going to raise the Fed Funds Rate one quarter of a percent in December. So when that happens, what happens is the, the bond market then will adjust accordingly, and they increase the, their bonds, their bond yields by a quarter of a percent. So we, as the city, took advantage of that, and we purchased one, one callable agency step up in, in November and another one in December. So on those two particular bonds, our initial rate was one and a quarter percent as opposed to one percent. Okay? It's still not a lot, but we did take advantage of the federal funds increase. Having said that, the yield that the city is, is receiving as of the end of December was ninety-nine basis points, so we're one basis point shy of one percent. So we're right up, you know, we're almost at one percent with, that we receive for, for our monies. We have for the, the half of the fiscal year, we earned about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in, in interest. And locally, we, we talked about the Shop Local Committee, but locally, we have approximately twenty-four percent, which is amounts to about eleven million dollars in our local bank, Farmers and Merchants Bank, which is, which is very good. We do not want to exceed twenty-five percent at that point, so we're right at, right at that mark of twenty-four percent. So we're, we're good there, too. I will answer any questions that council members may have, but I ask that you approve the Treasurers Report as of ending December two thousand and sixteen.
Questions, counsel? Okay, do I, do I have a motion to approve the Treasurers Report? Have submitted, please.
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Hewer and Lampton, call for the vote, please. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion? Councilmember Lampton?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for watching us, keeping an eye on our money.
Every day.
Passes three to zero. Okay, now, to the City Attorney's Office, the revisions to Galt Municipal Code regarding alternate members for commissions and committees.
Yeah. Mayor and councilmembers, at the regular City Council meeting in December of sixteen, the City Council directed staff to revise the membership of the Commission on Aging, the Public Safety Committee, and the Beautification Committee to remove the alternate members. Proposed ordinance achieved that goal by repealing and replacing three sections of the Municipal Code to remove the commissioning committee membership to eliminate the alternate members. Happy to answer any questions.
I think that about covers it all. Donna, do you mind reading the recommended action, please? Introduce an ordinance repealing and replacing Sections two point nine zero, point zero five zero, two point nine five, point zero five zero, and two point nine seven, point zero five zero of the Galt Municipal Code regarding alternate committee members. Waive the full reading of the ordinance and continue to the next regular meeting for adoption. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Hewer, Lampton, call for the vote, please. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lampton?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Okay, now, with the Human Resources Department, Senior Planner Position, Ms. Eathless.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is a request to unfreeze our principal, excuse me, our Senior Planner Position and freeze the Principal Planner Position. Currently in our budget, we have Principal Planner Position funded, and with discussions with the department, the need really at this time, based on the type of work and complexity of the assignments, that it would be better suited for a Senior Planner Position. So I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any regarding this request.
Questions, counsel? Yes, is the Principal Planner Position currently vacant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's currently vacant. We don't have any planners in our department since we promoted.
There is.
Chris, there is, there's our planning development director. Thank you for some help. And we need, they will, so then we will go out to hire a Senior Planner. Right. Thank you. Actually, I did ask the question if there was anyone that was capable of being hired from within, but so we are going, which is kind of a shame, but.
Never know.
You never know.
Okay.
Okay, so Donna, want to read that one again, please? We're right along. Yeah. Adopt a resolution revising Schedule Six of the approved budget by unfreezing the Senior Planner Position and freezing the funded Principal Planning Planner Position. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Campion and Hewer, call for the vote, please. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lampton?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Public Works Department, Groundwater Sustainability Agency Formation Options, Mr. Rees.
I'm going to see if I've got enough cord to hang myself here, and see if we can stand up and present. Thank you again. We'd like to give you a, a quick overview and a little bit of quick history for Councilmember Lampton, who was not present this past February. We gave the council an introduction to some new acronyms, and I, at the time, introduced it, saying I think it's going to be one of the more significant policy challenges for the city over the next few years, and I still believe that's true. So tonight, we'd like to give you a quick presentation of sort of what's changed and where are we since two thousand and seventeen. So we're going to, we're recommending that you receive this presentation and that we give you a quick overview of both the Groundwater Management Act and the Groundwater Sustainable Sustainability Agency requirements, and then what are some of the city's options, and then that you would provide us some staff direction on our recommendations and a preferred option for moving forward. We do have a limited amount of time, we have until June thirtieth of this year, to have formally filed and been recognized with a complete application to avoid possible sanctions by the State Water Board. So some of these slides will be familiar, it's a little bit of a recap. What is the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act? It was a group of three bills, were passed by the legislature and signed by the governor in two thousand and fourteen, and it required, among other things, that medium and critical groundwater basins, as, as identified by the Department of Water Resources, must form a group of groundwater sustainability agencies representing their basins, and that needs to be done again by June thirtieth of this year, and that, and those agencies develop groundwater sustainability plans for their basins, and in the case of a medium priority basin, that's required to be done, as with Galt, by January of two thousand and twenty-two. And then after the plans are adopted, we have twenty years to take measurable steps in five-year increments with measurable objectives to achieve full sustainability, and in planning for that and studying that, we have to use a fifty-year planning horizon on projected demands for water within the basin. One thing the bill expressly does not do is to change existing water rights. So the purpose of Sigma is to help reverse some of the damage that we've seen over the last hundred years of groundwater pumping and subsidence issues, aquifers drying up and irreversibly being damaged by overdrafting, and to ensure that we don't have saline water intrusion, groundwater contamination, or we continue to, to build as ground, land use agencies in an unsustainable manner for a long-term outlook. And, and it also was intended to, that, to make sure that we're making progress and empowering and requiring local agencies to assert some control over their land use decisions and their basins, and if we fail to do so, it makes provision for the state to step in and start telling us how to manage our groundwater. The definition of sustainable groundwater is at the bottom of the slide, and it's basically using manner, water in a manner that can be maintained during this fifty-year planning horizon without causing undesirable results. And undesirable results are defined as chronic lowering of groundwater levels or significant and unreasonable reductions in storage, seawater intrusion, degradation of water quality, land subsidence, and other adverse impacts to beneficial uses of the water. So then what is this GSA acronym that you'll be hearing tonight? It, it can be any local public agency or combination of public agencies that have a responsibility to either provide a water supply, or manage water within a basin, or have land use authority. So cities, counties, special districts are the typical types of agencies that would be forming, or have a responsibility to determine if they're going to become a groundwater sustainability agency. Those that step forward must be willing to develop and implement a plan by two thousand and twenty-two, and then to consider the interests of all basin beneficial users, including the environment and others, to create measurable objectives to achieve sustainability, and have to then study the basin and prepare technical reports that would define the, the physical characteristics, the recharge demands, and the amount of water available, and, and then identify what possible water quality threats there might be, and the extent and risk of subsidence, and then lastly, is there any groundwater, surface water interaction in our basin? There's some concern that as we continue to pump, that that's having an adverse impact on the surface waters of the Kasumus River, which is not threatened today, but in a long-term sense, does actually go dry in the summer, and so there are concerns for downstream interests. So the law also empowers cities, or counties, or land use agencies with certain authorities once they elect to become a GSA, and it also then holds them responsible to do certain things. Some of the powers and duties that they're enabled to do would be to conduct water use investigations on private property, on public lands, and to determine and establish what is the sustainable yield as defined. And then, it then, as we start implementing objectives and have determined what a sustainable yield is, we then become the, the water police, and we would then have abilities to measure and limit how much water is extracted by different users. And we also have the authority, those agencies that move forward, to impose fees to cover the costs of doing those things, as well as protect groundwater supplies and enforce the terms of the groundwater sustainability plans that are adopted. When we met with you in February of last year, there was some interest in, I'm sorry, May of last year, there was some interest in looking for collaborative partnerships, and some disappointment that some agencies were moving ahead. So we have been discussing with this list that you see on the slide, and the Water Forum of Sacramento has received a grant from DWR to help do some facilitation and coordination to see if there are opportunities for partnering, and, and these are pretty much the extent of water districts within our Kasumus Sub Basin. Of late, we've added Amador County at the bottom of the list, and that'll become apparent why in just a moment, but they've been sitting at the table with us as well. Next slide, because as you can see in this slide, well, actually, the next slide will show it better, but the Kasumus Sub Basin actually goes up into Amador County. And this slide is washed out, so you can't see that boundary, but it actually extends up to near Ione. I think your hand out in your pocket might show that a little better. If you go back one slide, this is the map we showed you last May. There were two other issues. They were boundary change proposals, one on the north side of the basin where the yellow line is extending up into the South American Basin. Oma Chumney-Hartnell Water District petitioned the state to allow that area to be annexed into the Kasumus Sub Basin so that they didn't have to file or participate in two plans, one on the north side of the Kasumus and another one in our basin on the south side. Similarly, on the south side, San Joaquin County interests, most notably the North San Joaquin Water Conservation District, had a proposal to, to detach from our sub basin, the area in dark gray there, and adjoin it to the San Joaquin Sub Basin to the south. That was ultimately approved by the State Water Board and is now the case. Our basin now excludes that area shaded in dark gray, despite our concerns being expressed by City of Galt as well as other local agencies. They did not approve the Oma Chumney-Hartnell, so they're going to have to play in two different bases. Next slide. This is sort of an updated slide that shows the current conditions and status of who has filed within our basin. The white spaces within the white boundary that is supposed to be blue on my slide are areas that nobody's filed for, and you can vaguely see Galt city limit outprint down there, near Dry Creek, wedged in between Galt Irrigation District, which actually straddles the City of Galt on east and west and to the north. They have filed and have started a ninety-day clock, which if the city wishes to, to file with one or more of its options in an area that would overlap, we have until the end of March to do so. But that time is, the clock is ticking on a ninety-day trigger if we wish to overlap them and force a reconciliation of our interest versus their request to be the exclusive providers in the gray areas.
Steve, Steve, not to interrupt you, but what happens if we annex property? I mean, I know LAFCO in the past has done a detachment from those irrigation districts. Is that the same thing that would affect?
Yeah, historical and current LAFCO practice are to cause detachments when we annex. We would recommend that that continue and encourage and advocate for that, to avoid creating overlaps that do not exist today.
Right.
And I think we would then have the ability, if, if our boundaries change, to then amend our GSA boundary.
Because we don't have any overlap at this point, do we?
We do not with the current city limits, because we have, every time we've annexed, we detached.
Okay.
So that's true. Real quick, the areas in green in our basin and the basin to the north, those have already been granted exclusive GSA authority. The ninety-day clocks have run out, and it's too late to file any type of overlap in those areas. Clay Irrigation District in the middle of the map there is currently white space. They have not filed a notice of intent, but we, they have indicated that they intend to do so. They're kind of in the same boat we are, making their decisions to make sure we meet the June thirtieth deadline ahead of us. Oma Chumney-Hartnell has a portion of our basin and has been coordinated with Slough House Resource Conservation District, and they have an exclusive area in the north area of green up against the basin boundary. And then Slough House RCD is one of the larger water jurisdictions in our basin, and they actually overlap all the way from the East County border and to both rivers, all the way to Highway ninety-nine. They have entered into agreements with both Galt Irrigation District, Oma Chumney, and Clay to carve out those areas so there wouldn't be an overlap, and the intent would be to fill in the white space as we move forward. Next slide. So just a little bit of General Plan one oh one. As you know, we have an existing city limit, that's the hard line that you see there in black. Within that, we have what we affectionately call the County Island of unincorporated property down off South Lincoln in the vicinity of Ranch, North Acost. That is still an unincorporated pocket or island within the city limits, and one of our options talks about, you know, if we, you know, as part of future planning, it's in our sphere of influence, for continuity might be desirable to claim that in partnership with the county to, to have a cohesive boundary without a carve-out in the middle of it. with the county to have a cohesive boundary without a carve-out in the middle of it. The dotted line around the perimeter, as you are probably aware, is our general plan boundary, which is also coincident with the city's LAFCO-fired sphere of influence. That would be our future service boundaries within our general plan, and that might be another area where the council may wish to have some say and voice and governance input into what happens, because that is our future growth area for the city. However, to do that, we would then start to overlap. We've already got areas where it's too late to file on top of the Slough House Resource RCD, but the area that we showed you previously within the Galt Irrigation District would still be a possibility should the city desire to go there. Next slide. So, we're gonna quickly run you through the options that are in the staff report. The easiest option for the city would be to do what the other agencies have elected to do, sort of by default would be to become our own GSA strictly within our current jurisdictional boundaries of the city limits. It would not create an overlap, and we would have exclusive governance authority as the plan is developed for how it will be implemented, input into the objectives that will be put on the city, and nobody else would have a say in how we operate our water system other than it'll have to be in conformance with the basin plan that all agencies would have to agree on. And some of the, you know, counter indications are it will be harder to do, and as yet, we've not found a willing partner, and it's hard to force a partnership if you don't have willing partners. Next slide. Option two would be, as mentioned earlier, to include city limits and the unincorporated island, and that has some benefits for continuity and planning, wouldn't overlap any other GSA other than cover up the white space within the city limits, and it would also, it was a partnership with a more sophisticated agency that has staff and funding resources to bring to the table. It would require a formal agreement. The county has indicated some concerns with the ability in short time to get it done, and we do have some fairly disparate interests within the city as municipal water supply as to what ag and individual farmers and property owners in the rural area with their own private wells is a different type of constituency, and, you know, do, does, do we want them to have a say in what the city does? Does the city really want to have a say in what they do from a governance standpoint? We would certainly have input into what happens within the basin as we develop the plan. Next slide. So, the third option would be to expand into our sphere of influence, so we have a say in our future growth areas. That would start to create overlaps, and we would already be prohibited from overlapping on top of the Slough House RCD, but there would still be an opportunity to sort of file an overlap with Galt Irrigation, and then that would force reconciliation of, hey, do we want to get together or not? Time is short for that. Next slide. And the final option would be to not overlap anybody, but would be to partner for the white spaces, the spaces that would be the city limits, and areas that nobody else has already or plans to file for within the basin. And again, that would, any type of partnership would require a willing partner and formal agreements to be in place so that we can file timely and hold the public hearings before the June thirtieth filing deadline. Next slide. You've heard the word governance with all of the options and prior slides. That is really all about determining who gets to decide how things are going to be done within a groundwater sustainability agency. Who has a say? Who sits on the board? Is it a JPA? What are the voting rights and weighting of those votes? Who's gonna select the consultants? Who's gonna develop the plan? Who's gonna develop the water use projections? What are the sustainability objectives? What are the timelines, you know, five-year increments, which ones are gonna be sooner and which ones are gonna be later? Those with a say will get to have input into developing those plans, which is why you don't want the state necessarily coming in and adjudicating the basin. I think local agencies are in a better position to determine constituent needs and what's best for each jurisdiction. So, the bottom two questions kind of sum up the governance issue is how much say would the city want, and what happens outside our city limits? And when you go there, then the converse question is, and if you open up a partnership, how much say do you want others to have into how we enforce and roll out the regulations within the city limits? So, this is a new slide that is not in your packet. It dawned on me as I was reviewing this afternoon that we'd put some next steps in your packet that didn't have them in our presentation, so this is basically right out of your staff report. Depending on the option that the council elects, we would hopefully get an indication tonight from the council, and then we, if that was to continue to seek partnerships, we'd need to formalize those arrangements and then schedule a notice public hearing. And then we have a filing deadline with the state, and there's a lot of information that has to be uploaded for your application or notice of intent to be deemed complete, and then that all has to be done before June thirtieth. If there are any overlaps, those would also have to be resolved. With that, we're recommending option one to you tonight, in that most other agencies have elected to go their own way, and sort of the last standing potential partner has expressed concerns with differing constituencies and differing governance concerns, and the short time left to get there, that they feel that, and they would, county would be involved in options two, three, and four if we elected to go with one of those. So, that sort of leaves us with the easiest to implement, also seems to be the most practical from a staff perspective. We certainly are interested in what council's opinion is and which option you would like us to pursue. We have four short months to get there, so this slide opened up for any questions you might have, and seek some consensus direction from the council.
Council, questions?
Where do we get our water now?
Galt's groundwater is 100% groundwater. We have no surface water, no imports, and no viable short-term way to get anything other than groundwater, so it's all deepwater wells that we're pumping in the city.
I think, you know, you kind of summed it up. I don't see any overwhelming reason to partner with another jurisdiction or another agency, simply because most of the other agencies, their water provisions are for such, it's not for urban use. I mean, their agriculture, City of Galt.
We are the only incorporated urban city within the basin.
Within the basin, so it doesn't, I mean, we're not gonna have any similar interests. And if in fact, the city does go to expand, and we have the ability to detach from that district and implement our plan, that makes the most sense, because then it's clean along that, whatever that boundary is. So, it seemed like it would just overly complicate things at this time to even partner with somebody if we could find a viable partner.
I would agree with you, as your staff person making the recommendation, that there just aren't a lot of options that remain viable.
Do you foresee that there would be any issue with, at the time when things go before LAFCO about bringing, like, we have a couple of annexations in the horizon, is there gonna be, has there ever been in the past any issue about then separating from Galt Irrigation and becoming part of our?
Not to my knowledge, yeah, that the typical, the typical detachment is from Galt Irrigation, and actually, the Slough House Conservation District will be a new detachment for us as we go east, because we're now encroaching in their territory. So, the Eastview Annexation will include a detachment from the Galt Irrigation District and the Slough House Conservation District, but the city-initiated annexation north, I think will just deal with Galt Irrigation District.
And you don't foresee that there would be any issue about, I mean, just trying to weigh the options between one, or do we go for our sphere of influence? You don't foresee there would be any option?
No, I had met with the Slough House Conservation District, and they didn't voice any objection to at least the annexation. We didn't talk about the GSA boundaries, but they seemed indifferent to the annexation process, and we're in the process of reaching out to the Galt Irrigation District to talk about the detachment from them, so, you know, we're guessing there'll be a cooperative player.
And it would appear to me that option one becomes, you know, the.
Well, it becomes a different type of services. Galt ID, it's irrigation district. We have our own water.
Not, but just because in regards to the GSA, if, in fact, this is a territorial sort of issue, because you have access to the basin, then would people become less willing to detach?
I think we had protests in the past for the detachments, but LAFCO had approved them, simply because it makes sense in terms of the, you know, ultimate use of the property. There's no other land use authority out there. I mean, and that's what it came down to, is we're the only incorporated city in South County, or in the basin for that matter.
The typical special district concern with detachment is they lose some tax base, and that usually gets either sort of overridden as an overriding consideration, or becomes part of the city-county tax sharing agreement when we annex, and so if those were, if it was more of a revenue issue rather than a duplication of service issue, which LAFCO tries to avoid, that would be addressed through that process.
Well, I think it's important that we maintain control of our water system.
Yeah, one more point on the detachments going forward to our sphere of influence. You know, the Slough House Resource RCD comes all the way to ninety-nine and overlaps their overlying boundary. They have not filed for Galt-centric because they were looking to be respectful of our jurisdiction as they did, same thing with the Clay Irrigation District. They omitted them in Oma Chumney-Hartnell Water District and Galt ID. Those are all potential overlaps, so I think the partners are trying to be respectful of each other and not force overlap, so neither Galt Irrigation District or Slough House had an interest in sort of competing with the city within our city limits, so I think.
Now, what are we gonna call ourselves if they're the Galt Irrigation District? I mean, that seems a little strange to me.
Well, we are, we are the City of Galt, and our GSA would be the City of Galt Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
Why, there's the Galt. I'm just asking.
We were Galt ID.
Okay, and then.
Till they formed the city.
Oh, okay.
And then it was formally afterwards. I didn't even think we had water initially. I think it came afterward, they formed a water department.
Okay. That's the point of whatever happened. That's kind of seems a little strange, but, okay.
Well, I would think option one is our most viable option.
I agree with that.
Yeah, me too. Okay, so.
Do we need a motion?
Donna, do you wanna read, do we need a motion?
Well, this is Direction Sustainability Agency, and provide directions to staff on preferences for moving forward.
So, we're just gonna provide direction for you to.
Do you want a motion?
I'd recommend a motion to direct staff to proceed with option one.
Okay.
So moved?
Second.
Hewer, Champion, offer the vote, please. Kind of weird for two people.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lansin?
Aye.
Pass is four-two-zero.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're down to communications now. City clerk?
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing, okay. Staff, I guess we'll start with Chris.
Nothing additional, thank you.
Please. Melanie?
Kelly.
Mark?
No, thank you.
Paula? Armando?
I'm sorry, I'll ruin it.
[laughing]
Tomorrow, the Parks and Rec Commission will be discussing options for our playground replacement at Community Park. We've reached out to Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts of the area, Crime Stoppers through TJ Gadati. We've posted it on our Facebook, and we've had several comments to us, and then we'll be discussing it tomorrow, and then providing that information to Public Works to provide specs and go out to an RFP.
And it did go out a lot, because I saw more than one post out in the, out there.
It'll be going on tomorrow at seven PM at the Parks and Rec Commission here in these chambers.
Thank you. Well, thank you, staff. They did another great job with the bird festival. Okay, chief?
Just want to say that we're excited. We have two new police officers, new dispatchers. For the first time ever in history, Galt were fully staffed and dispatched, so that's very exciting, so.
Right.
We have two items for the council this evening. First item is to present our new Get Around Galt brochure that Ms. Mendez, our Economic Development Manager, has been working on for, can you hear me okay? For several months, and input from the community. And one of the economic tools that we realized we did not have is something to let people know where our shopping is around Galt, and when they come visit our community, we can pass us out at our hotels and Galt Market. The home builders have requested a stack to put into their welcome baskets in a lot of different places that we'll be using, so kind of, you know, distribute that, and you'll be seeing these around town in the next several weeks. The second item that I'd like to address with the council is some emails and correspondence that the council has been receiving over the past week or so, and as your city manager, you know, my job is to build community and, you know, can build relationships, you know, within the community. Sometimes that doesn't go so well. Sometimes there's some differences that, you know, that I do have, you know, with other organizations within the community. And, you know, particularly, the council was forwarding an email from me, emails from Bonnie Rodriguez to the councilmember Hewer dated February sixth regarding public information requests. Ms. Rodriguez asserted in her email that I was attempting to control the information going to the media and the general public, and that Galt Herald had been lied and denied access to public information. And I do apologize if that is the way the, you know, when I communicated with Galt Herald that, you know, that was taken. Do not, you know, mean to, you know, miscommunicate, I guess, with the Galt Herald, but at this time, I still, I do not understand what specific situation, what has prompted Ms. Rodriguez these concerns, but I do want to take this opportunity to clarify to the city council, the public, and the press my practice for sharing public information accuracy. I am extremely concerned that any information that is provided to the press or to the public by the city is accurate. To help ensure accurate information is published, I have asked for all these inquiries to come to the city PIO or the city manager, and for all information going to the press to be sent out from the city PIO or the city manager's office. This approach is a standard in most government and business organizations. responsiveness. I understand that the reporters operate on deadlines, and we make every effort to respond quickly to the press inquiries. accessibility and courtesy. I am easily accessible to the public and the press. I always try to be courteous, even though I do not have much information to share on the topic that the reporter may be asking for. There are times when my job and the job of the reporter may differ, you know? For example, controversy may be one of the elements that creates news. My work is to resolve any controversy and to avoid conflict. As a government entity, we make every effort to operate in a transparent manner. However, there are times when the public's business needs to be conducted in private, and this is not because we are hiding information. These meetings are private because it is in the best interest of the city to operate in this manner. You know, some examples of the city business that is often conducted in private include employee evaluations, development negotiations, evaluation proposals from professional firms, employees' training sessions, and department head meetings. In summary, I invite Bonnie Rodriguez and the Galt Herald to engage in an ongoing dialogue with me to help create and maintain a positive working relationship. Sometimes this may involve working through difficult issues, but I encourage Galt Herald to stay at the table, to communicate with me, and make a commitment to working through areas of concern to reach a mutual resolution. Thank you.
Well, I do believe that there's two sides to every story, and I think that this should have been, we still should have been talking about that, not out in the public until everything has gotten resolved. That's just my opinion on the way things have been going.
Well, I disagree, Mary Lou, because, one, the email was sent to me. Once it's sent to me, it's a public document, and I was pretty uncomfortable with the facts that it didn't go to the city manager, that it just came to me, and it laid out a number of concerns from the newspaper, and I actually am glad that Mr. Fazio is willing to address the issues. We need to have a good working relationship with the press. You know, the press has recently, two weeks ago, there was an article written in the press following the last council meeting, which I was grossly misquoted and taken quite out of context, so I think is why we got some of the comments to that tonight. But I think that we have to work with the press, and I want the city to work with the press, because it's one of the great ways we keep the community informed about regarding what's happening, but when it is sent to me via an email, all it takes is a public information act, and it's public information, and then it is really a public document, and so I did give it to Mr. Fazio. I sent it to Mr. Fazio and did ask that he send it to the rest of the council.
Well, we all received, okay, we all did receive it, and there was communications and meetings.
and meetings before that, of which you weren't privy, and that's-
Well, I hope that we're doing the public's business and publish.
Well, I think that's what the newspaper hopes, too, so, you know, I'm under the, I don't think it's all been resolved, and I think we-
Well, you just stated that there were private meetings, I really hope there are private meetings that affect the city business.
Well, it was brought on by the city, not by the paper. And like I said, there's two sides to every story, and it needs to be all come out, that's just where I am with that.
If I could just comment, you know, I did receive the email that was sent to Laurie, and I read it, and it concerned me, because there were a number of accusations, although there was nothing specific, there was no specificity as to who, what time, what the subject matter was, whether it was a public record, or what the specific information was. So I think what Jean has done tonight has, you know, has advanced it to the point where we need to communicate, and if there are legitimate questions and concerns, they need to sit down with Jean and work that out. You know, this hasn't occurred, to my knowledge, in recent times, and I'm a little floored by it, and I think a good, a good first step is to work towards resolution.
Right, and there was a chance to try to work to resolution, and it didn't get to resolution.
Well, I wasn't in, whatever meeting you're talking about, or whatever, but I think that that still needs to occur.
I totally agree with you.
Well, I think, you know, hopefully, representatives of the Herald will pick it up and give Jean a call, let's move down, let's move down a smoother road.
Right.
So, that's all I have.
All right, moving right along, Steve.
Well, I have a couple of additional points that I want to make along the lines that the city manager expressed this evening. I'm always concerned when the public or the press asserts that they've been lied to by city officials, denied access to public information, or denied access to public meetings, and I think we need to just reflect upon what exactly are the laws that require transparency in the conduct of the city's business, and there's really only two primary laws. The first is the open meeting law, known as the Brown Act, and that requires meetings of the city council, or city council-formed commissions and committees, to be noticed and open to the public. City staff-level meetings or meetings with one or two council members are not subject to the Brown Act. It doesn't mean that the public or the press may not be invited from time to time to those meetings, but there is not a legal right to attend staff-level meetings or meetings with one or two council members. The second is the Public Records Act, and as you would expect, that requires that certain documents retained by the city must be shared with members of the public upon request. There is no law that requires city council members or city staff to respond to questions from the press or the media. It may be something that is desirable, it may be a good practice to do that, but it is not a legal requirement to respond to inquiries from the press, other than the Public Records Act requests. The Galt Herald has threatened legal action against the city relating to their assertions that I mentioned at the beginning of my comments, and I will be contacting the Herald and seeking information from them to better understand exactly what legal violations they believe may have occurred, and to try to rectify that situation if in fact, there had been violations of the law, and I'll report back to the council on that information as it becomes available to me.
Okay, but can I just go back to where you were saying about talking to staff members and all that? That is freedom of the press, they can go and talk to staff members, correct?
The, you know-
I mean, without having to, I mean, without having to go through anybody else?
The press can ask a question of anyone that they so choose. The question, or the issue, is whether or not there is an obligation of the person that they ask to respond, and there is not a legal obligation of any city official to respond to a question posed by the press. There's a legal obligation to hold open meetings, there's a legal obligation to produce documents.
And they're, and they have the right to ask, whether a person decides to answer or not is up to them.
That is correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure. Jean, who is our current PIO?
Ms. Saddles.
Every organization I have ever worked for has had a public information officer, or someone that the media went through so that they got correct information, so that it was channeled to the right staff member, I mean, I think that is kind of standard operating procedure. For the media to feel that they should, that they don't have to follow that practice, I've never worked for an organization that that wasn't the practice, or even when I served on the high school board, it was the practice of the school district, that we had an information person that the media's request went to. Now, it might not be that now, but it was at that time, that was the superintendent's policy. I absolutely support that the city manager would have that kind of policy, because I think then we make sure that we get the correct information out to the public, and the staff member, and it takes that staff time to do that, and we don't want three or four people answering the same question, spending the time to do that, and utilizing what really to us is, is a limited resource, right, a finite resource, of how much time our staff have and what we want to. We want to get the information out, but we want to make sure it's correct, and we want to make sure it's the right person doing it, and not multiple staff working on, on a document or working on getting information. Well, and I totally agree with that, and I think that that's what the newspaper agrees with, except when they're told, you know, they're giving very specifics about what they can and can't do, it's kind of an insult to them, is, you know, to what you have, having the freedom of the press has the right to do, so.
I just hope they have a discussion.
Yeah, I do, too, they tried it once, let's hope they have another one. Okay, moving right along.
I have nothing else.
Are you sure?
I'm positive.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, I've been thinking about how we, just recently, since Chief Drummond was here, for having an officer at the city council meetings, and I'm not sure that's always necessary, especially in lieu of how short we are of officers at this time, our chief has been the sergeant of arms, might be something we want to look at to see if that officer's better served out on the streets during the staff meetings, so just something to think about.
Okay.
And thank you for the Bird Festival, it was, every year it's wonderful, and even though there were three events that were canceled out, there was still plenty for everybody to do, and I've heard great reviews, the youth commission, just loved it, and thank you for, I know you got it on you at the last minute, you did a great job, Armando, thank you so much.
And I just added, it's really my staff that handles the majority, Leslie, Monica, Misty did a great job, them, because of them, it was a great event.
So acknowledged, thank you. Donna, another viewer? This begins the Bird Festival, but I did attend the Sacramento Library Authority meeting, and the Galt Library was on the agenda, and they are working with Steve regarding continuing with the architectural plans for that. I also had asked Jean for Shop Local, the information about regarding Shop Local, and how Shop Local was formed, and I've attended, been attending Shop Local meetings, I've attended two, just two in the last month, but in looking at, it doesn't seem to be a lot of structure to the meetings, which is why I asked Jean, what is, what is the absolute goal of Shop Local, and what is the structure of it, and so thank you for giving me that information, I really appreciate it, because it does appear to be that it was a report that was written in 2008, or a study that was commissioned in 2008, so it's eight years old, and there's some recommendations in that report, and I haven't read the whole thing, because we just received it yesterday, and it's over a hundred pages long, but there are things that, one of the things being, one of the main recommendations in the recommendation section was that it be reviewed yearly, and it doesn't appear to me that it's been brought back. In 2011, when Shop Local was formed, the city manager's report at that time, which was also included in the email to all of us, left some pretty specific things, but it did say that it had no structure, but one of the things it said was that yearly, they're to bring to the council the list of events that they're planning on doing, but that it's under the umbrella of the Chamber of Commerce, and that they're supposed to bring to us the list of events, that's not happened, I understand Mr. Plazio met with them and has now requested that they do that, so that we can budget and look at, look at what kind of money we're going to spend on it. But I have some concerns in the fact that there doesn't seem to be a voting structure among Shop Local, there doesn't really seem to be a membership, it seems to be kind of open to anyone and anything, the conversation seems to be whatever happens to be, and not really focusing on the structure of the events or what's happening, and maybe it's just that there's other conversation going on that's not happening at the meeting. I just would, I'm going to, I'm going to attend tomorrow morning and share with it, they meet every morning at every Wednesday at 8:30 in the morning, and I didn't realize this was going to be a weekly meeting, and actually, in looking at it, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand why they meet weekly, but we, but I think that Shop Local needs to get back on track on what it was originally formed, or the council needs to look at what, what we expect out of Shop Local, or what we're thinking, because there doesn't seem to be any evaluation on whether events are successful, whether they're meeting the goals of Shop Local. Shop Local was supposed to, and it seems to focus a lot on events, and not on some of the things worth to encourage citizens to shop locally, and to do-
It's not like economic development.
Well, the two are both in the report, they seem to overlap a lot.
I haven't read it, I haven't-
Yeah, Economic Development Task Force comes out of this same report, this same study that was done in 2008.
Right.
So, I think that whether we do it as part, there's some really great stuff in the 2008 report, I absolutely, in looking at it, think that there's some great ideas in it, but whether we need to bring it back, have staff bring it back, and we actually look at this and decide, but we need to evaluate whether, you know, whether things are being effective and whether we're moving in the right direction. There was also an ordinance that the city council passed waiving all business license fees, but there's very specific events listed, but we appear to be doing it now for events that aren't listed there. So I am concerned about why we're doing that, and whether or not we want to continue to do that. So, the point was, you want to bring back looking up what the purpose of Shop Local was, I'm sorry, is that it? Well, I want to look at the report, and whether we need to bring back the report and have a discussion about regarding whether or not the recommendations of this report, and whether things are, whether or not, the staff look at the report, and I really appreciate, I know it took a lot of effort to find a report from 2008 that nobody seemed to have a copy of, thank you, Donna. I mean, there was, actually, when you look at the council members, you know, most of the, well, actually, all of the council members in 2008 are not here today, I mean, we're not here, and so, it is, and if we're basing decisions based on a 2008 document, then I just think we need to bring it back and look at it and evaluate it. Okay, got it, so I guess we're to me, and that's it for today.